Good afternoon. Thanks for coming. We'll start our meeting. To the first item on the agenda today is employee recognition. We have one.
Yeah, so this is a definite career milestone and this person in my time as commissioner, we just had a brief conversation. Brighton's every room she walks into and is a tremendous asset, team player to the county. Very grateful for 30 years of valuable contribution to Julie Jensen Kelly.
Yeah, thank you. The next item is not actually an again item, it's an addition, but last week we were made aware of an emergency repair that was needed at the courthouse currently Atlas is working on doing the point tucking on the top section of the jail and identified a hole in the copper roof. And so as we looked at it and tried to identify what we were going to do, we realized that Atlas was currently there already and doing other work. So we asked them for a price and we reached out to Dom Brothers who specializes in bronze and copper roofs and they were unable to give a quote. They said it would be more than a year before they could get to it. And so the commissioners had decided to make an emergency repair in the amount of $47,773 to Atlas to repair the roof. And we did that last week outside of a meeting, but it was an emergency repair that was needed. And we're going to pay for that from Q and C, which we currently have 150,000 in our budget. And so we'll take the 47,000 out. Any questions or further discussion on that?
I have none.
Does that satisfy the declaration?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is acceptance of right of way and deed of dedication. Nathan Bilder.
So what this is, we have as part of the city county redevelopment project, sewer project out along one hundred south and standard east, there were three property owners that we acquired right of way from or are in process of. We have two of them who have signed and signed the deed of dedication. The third, we were hoping to have by today, but he's had conflicts and has been able to make it. So two of those property owners are there before you, one on the north side and then the landline property, which is one of those 100,000, 100,000, the one on the southern end of 300 is still the outstanding one. We'll bring that to you later. What this does is just dedicate the right of way to the county, to the public and the way the deed of dedication is set up. You actually have to formally accept that dedication. Any questions?
Any questions for Nathan? Well, these need to be handled in a separate motion since there are two that we're approving.
You can do both together if you want. So I will move to accept the deed of dedication of public right of way, parcel number 9205-1800010600012 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. And opposed to saying that passes, the call numbers present.
I have to do that.
I'll give you. How's that project come along?
It is interesting. It is done other than this final paperwork for the use of dedication and generators. The backup generator relaxation has been on back order and has been since last year. ETA for that is what on August or September. We'll see in a couple of months whether that goes in. So we still have that component that's still outstanding and with everything else has been paid for. And it's just waiting to, I'll keep it in that stuff.
I will move to accept the agreement to dedicate right of way described in document number 2023-020170 as presented.
Have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hands. Opposed to saying that motion carries.
Do we look at any prospects for that building?
I don't. They will probably be able to ensure anything inquiries. We haven't had any inquiries in our office, but the things that go in that wouldn't be that frequent that we did something. So it would be a perfect first.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far, Nathan. Next item on the agenda is fine gets before you get started. You sent me an email last year or last week about a voicemail that you received from a resident off horseshoe at Fish Hatchery.
Great.
And have we talked to you about this? There's complaints of the use, private use of the right of way of the road that's dedicated to the county. There's some structures that stick out in the right of way, parking trailers in right of way. It's not county maintained. It is county right of way. Never maintained it as far as no removal. Last of all, we did put some limestone down to improve hopples and such at the request of residents and commissioners also involved.
So this is on the west side of that public ground or whatever on the west side of Fish Hatchery?
Yes, and as I understand, it used to be an old firehouse.
At the north end was, yeah. Now you haven't, but we've heard a similar but different issue actually about the public ground itself now about the right.
So the question that we have, because I just received another voicemail from the resident or the constituent, is are we able to like maybe send a letter to the offender to say you need to take your stuff out of the right of way?
We can look into that. Whether it comes from us or you guys, I don't know which is more appropriate. What we looked into was complaining about a shed in the deck. Here's, and this was a year or so ago, the dead is old, being a lot of the warming in the deck wasn't coming. But I'm not aware of anything else. So I'll work with you on, but exactly, have you ever seen the trailers or that career?
Yeah, I think that they're parking alongside of the right of way and it makes it very difficult for the residents to gain access to their driveways or garages.
We'll look into that. I'll work with you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Community crossings matching grant construction agreement.
This should be the last project that we signed. We were here last time. Been signed by. Needs.
Great. Any questions for Ryan on that?
I would move that we approve that within minutes.
Sorry.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And then I'll call the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Paula. 2025 advisory board meetings, meeting dates and board members.
Good afternoon. Yes, so you should have in front of you to correct it, Rachel. The first one I still left 2024 that I sent you. So I have the 2025 advisory board meeting dates listed as well as the executive committee meetings. I did confirm that the meeting rooms are available on those dates.
Okay.
And then the second matter is that we updated advisory board members. We are proposing additional board member of a healthcare professional. That means specifically April Ball and that has been approved by our advisors.
Okay.
Can we vote these in one motion or?
Yeah, sure. Give me as long as you state and vote for motion.
I will move to approve the 2025 meeting dates for the community corrections advisory board and the additional board member.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously. There's two documents to sign here. One is the front page or the last page.
I think it still says 2024. Did you say that?
I said, I should, you should have.
Oh, I got it. Perfect. I had one handful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You have anything else?
No, thank you. There's. And this is someone's, I don't know who's.
Must be Rob.
Just the last page. Right. Next up, Scott Wagner, health board member renewals.
Good afternoon. Every year we have somebody at consulting board. This year we have two after different after leave. Both were approved by this board without any other attachments. That'd be just serving on their four years. So just the approval, we want that. And then I'll bring those forms down for you.
And they're both more than willing to continue to serve.
They are in the health board last week, two weeks ago. They're pretty old.
Great.
I have no issues with.
Concerns. I want to hear a motion to approve the renewals.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously. Thank them for their service too.
Yeah.
I know they both do a great job. I appreciate them for the role. Next item on the agenda is the Peterson Consulting Agreement for Capital Assets Report in your office use this most.
Yes, we work with all of the determinants to get, get full reports and make sure that right of ways, bridges, all of that are up to date. And then Peterson puts it all together and it works better for us.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Tiffany on Peterson Consulting?
I'm going to approve the agreement as presented.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is a change order from ERS. I can kick this off and then you can help me a little bit, but a few previous meetings ago, we approved an agreement with ERS for an antenna that will be positioned on the jail and didn't realize that it was above the $50,000 that put it into a different threshold for quotes and that sort of thing. And so by mistake, we approved that and then discovered it once we went to council to ask them to allocate ARPA funds. And so all along, it could have just been a change order and should have, would have been more appropriate for that to be a change order. So Andy was able to work with the ERS and change the agreement from a new contract to a change order. And you can highlight anything.
I think that pretty much covers it. I mean, it was, you had a contract with them to do the first part through more rule or subcontractor. They issued a contract, they really just a change order through existing contracts, just doing existing work. And it's under the threshold of statute form of a change order. I talked to them. I said, can you reissue this, the change order? That's more appropriate. Of course, they did that. This resolution addresses that, lays out what happened, how it was first characterized as a new contract and it should have been a change order. And then this resolution would approve the change order.
So it's resolution number 2024 dash 11.
Now, normally you wouldn't have to give any kind of resolution for a change order. You just approve it. But I thought this would be all the council and show the lineage of what happened and explain the situation to everybody on the same page.
Sure.
I would move that we approve resolution 2024.
They have to wait the second reading or is that not?
Not for resident members. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is recommendations on positions and compensation per 2025 budget. So it was brought to our attention a few meetings previous that there's statute that says commissioners serve a recommendation to council on the salary ordinance, essentially like the percent raise or what it is that we would like for them to do for personnel year over year. So I don't recall the statute and you probably don't know off the top of your head.
The number?
Yeah.
I don't.
So that's okay. So we tabled this at our last meeting, said that we would revisit it. So everyone should have had a chance to pull over a little bit, think about what we would recommend. And we, in doing this, we respect the council is the body who approves this, that this is an our decision to make, but that we're just serving a recommendation to council. In my opinion, and having been on council, I feel that any, any annual increase shouldn't match either the state or the federal government, whatever increases they're giving for cost of living allowance. So that would be my personal recommendation to council. I know the state number is already released. I think there's just speculation on what the federal number will be.
I would agree with you.
Does that sound correct, Jennifer? The state did a two point.
It's almost three percent.
Almost three percent, maybe a 2.8, I think. So nearly 3% increase for the year.
I think it's appropriate to follow those guidelines, like you said.
Yeah.
You feel the same? So that's something that I can just share with council. I'll have that state statute with me when I do. I think we have consensus and I'm not sure that it makes sense to vote.
Well, if they're asking for your formal recommendation, you may want to have that that you all agree on and did vote on. If that's what they're asking.
Okay, we can do that as well.
I would move that we follow state and federal recommendations on the cost of living allowance increase that they give their employees, that we would match that for our employees.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Here and then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying. The next item on the agenda is facilities request.
Yes. So we have a facilities request from Kim Wheeler Old Settlers' Day Association for 2025's Old Settlers' Days. The date requested is June 16th through June 22nd of 2025. The streets to be closed 616 through 623 at 11:00 PM. It's requesting the courthouse lawn hot air balloons, which they've done this, this year as well, bands on the south side and games. I don't believe it's anything that's, it's different than it's been years past. I have no issues with it. I would make an objection for if the request is presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying.
They have a whole facilities request. Rob, just cross out George's name.
We changed the format.
And that's not the one. Okay. I'll move that we table this until we get a correct form.
That'll be fine. And just stop accepting them if they're old form. Just don't, just tell them there's some supersede document that you can't accept it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is payroll and council claims approval.
I went up earlier and did some claims and also did payroll. I know Minister Schuman did most of the claims, so I would move that we approve payroll.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously. Council table?
I'll move similarly to through council table.
I have a motion in a second to approve the council table. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Did everyone have a chance to review meeting minutes from our July 15?
Yes, I didn't see any ears.
I'll vote that we approve minutes.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve meeting minutes from July 15. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed to saying that passes unanimously.
That's what you're saying. First, you basically table, table, make adjustments. Oh, that's right. You found issues with your name. Is that right?
We approved it. Any was corrected.
It completed that time.
Just for the. It wasn't just during my year. Just to be sure.
Yeah.
We submit that for July 1st.
July 1st meeting as presented?
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second to approve corrected meeting minutes for July 1st. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand and opposed to saying the mandatory. I have a comment. Is there anything that anybody would like to add today? Nothing, Scott.
We're going to talk on national health issues and COVID and bird flu.
I mean, you're more than welcome to.
So there has been a little bit of an increase in the COVID on the coastlines. And then you have seen the increase here. Not identified that there's increased hospitalizations. We have any deaths that I'm aware of. It's increasing. And just for people who may be watching, the current vaccine, it's not helpful with this current strain that's going through. There'll be a fall change to that vaccine if they wish to get that. I've been told that the CDC has made recommendation about starting vaccinations for bird flu. So cases reported in the United States with minimal health issues. So I don't know where that's going, but.
Allergy season's on rise too. Similar symptoms.
Other than that, there's nothing.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Anything else or other comment? Tiffany, do you have anything? Indiana did have.
I do have one thing and I'll talk more about it at a later date. For those of you who signed up for the Indiana connectivity program for your home to receive a grant, you should have received a letter from the state or you should be receiving that anytime. What the letter doesn't include is what provider was assigned to you. So to get that fiber to your home, you have to actually sign a letter accepting the grant funds. And I guess there's been a little bit of confusion. Some homeowners, I guess, don't understand that they have to sign and actually decline the funds, which we don't want to do that. I mean, it's, it's nothing out of your pocket. So be on the lookout for that. You do have to accept that. And also, if you weren't lucky enough to get selected, they are trying to figure out, engineer a way to pick up as many addresses around those that were. Whitley County was awarded just shy of, I believe, $400,000 for those. And they're, they are planning on doing two more rounds. So if you weren't awarded any money this round, keep doing it. You can do the test as many times as you'd like. But again, if you get that letter from the state, you will also get something else from the provider, having you accept them, allowing you to put, allowing them to put fiber to your home. having you accept them allowing you to put, allowing them to put fiber to your home. So that's it.
Anything to add, Rob?
Nothing.
I have nothing to add. So thanks for coming. The meeting is adjourned.